And the first one is to accept an update on COVID-19 and provide, if appropriate, direction to staff. And I see Anna Roth and Dr. Zevili, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Chair Mitchoff and members of the board. Thank you so much for having us again today to provide an update on COVID-19. I also have with me, as you said, our acting health officer, Dr. Ori Sveli, as well as deputy health officer, Dr. Sophie McCurrya, who will give an update on the schools. I'm happy to report that we are seeing a reduction in case rates, and we have been seeing these. And this last week, we actually saw a 29% reduction in case rates. So that, and that is now, today marks the 21st consecutive days of rates coming down. So this is a good sign. This, this does support our, and indicate that we are kind of coming on to the other side of the wave of this latest winter wave that was really predominantly the Omicron variant. That said, we just, we also recognize, and we've talked about this a lot, but that means the hospitalization rates will actually trail on, they will trail behind by a couple of weeks. I will say that we actually have seen four consecutive days of the hospitals, hospitalizations going down. We're currently today at 274. But that said, we actually saw it go up and down a little bit last week. So though we're seeing them stabilize, all of the rates are not yet going down as quickly as they rose. So there's still some, there's still some work ahead. There's still some time ahead, but these are all really good indicators. Again, I said, we have 274 people in the hospital right now. Some of our hospitals are actually, we have had hospitals report that they're approaching and one at 90% of their ICU capacity. Again, these are, these are kind of part of the overall picture. I talked last week about staff, sort of the burden of, we've seen sort of a wave of COVID hit workers across the, across the county in all sectors. Last week, we had 391 people in the month of January from our, our own health department who had gotten, who had come back positive with COVID. This week, it's actually up to 404. And so I think that just the important takeaway is this combination of staffing shortages, as well as sort of a high patient count continues to make the hospital capacity and the healthcare system ability to respond a top priority for us. The, another bit of the good news is, I would say, is the vaccination rates. We expect that in the, the coming days, if not by next week, we will actually be reaching 80% residents fully vaccinated. This is a really, this is a really great sign. This, this means that, that means that 80% of our county has gotten a first and a second dose. One, one point I want to make though, is that, that that news isn't quite as good when it comes to the boosters. And we know the boosters are really important. So 48% of our county population who's over 12 have received both their first, second dose as well as a booster. That number actually goes down when we start looking at the, at an equity gap. And right now, we're only at 29.1% of African Americans who are fully vaccinated and boosted and 28.2 Latinx. So we have a lot of work to do still. We, we, one of the things I want to remind everybody about the importance of boosters is if you are vaccinated and boosted, you are, you are actually nine times, or let me flip that around. If you aren't vaccinated and boosted, you're nine times more likely to be hospitalized if you get COVID than someone who has had that booster. So the booster is really important, particularly in this wave of the, of the pandemic. We do have vaccine appointments available across at all sites today. And I'm strongly encouraging everyone to go get their booster. There'll be more on that soon. And you can see a lot of information about that on our website. We also, and Dr. Sveli will talk a little bit more about this, but we anticipate that on February 15th, that the state will likely lift the indoor masking order. He's going to talk a little bit more about how that will like, how that will impact our local orders here. A couple of things I want to draw your attention to on our website is we actually have placed on the landing page at cchealth.org, we've actually placed a graphic that kind of helps to clarify masks, the importance of masks, and then the protection level, because I know that's come up with the board before, as well as with public comments. And we talked, we were, we actually have placed on there kind of the, the, the strength of the masks, as you will, reminding people that a cloth mask is better than no mask and provides fair protection, particularly for this variant. A surgical mask, though, provides good protection. So it's a little bit better. KN95s are actually better protection than a surgical ma- mask. And an N95 is actually best protection. You can find more information, again, as I said, on our landing page about the masks and the different levels of protection that they offer. We also know that there are N95 masks being, starting to be sent out to local pharmacies and we'll, we'll bring more information about that federal program as soon as we have it. But so keep an eye out for that. And I think, again, just stressing the importance of masks going forward and kind of how to, how to sort through the different masks and when to use what mask. Finally, we also know that federal home tests are starting to arrive across homes in Contra Costa County. Those are those US post office, the signups that we encourage everyone to do. Those are now, we know, arriving at homes. We actually have placed the CDC videos. CDC has actually created some videos, also sort of how-to videos. And those are also on our landing page. I, we do want to note that those, the links to those CDC videos to the Spanish versions are actually not working. That they seem to be, there seems to be an issue on the CDC side. So we are going to be working to get those up in the Spanish. And if, if the CDC videos don't actually, if that link, we can't get that to work, we'll be placing, at least for today, later on today, we will place subtitles on there and then we'll, we will locate Spanish speaking videos as well. With that, I want to turn it over to our acting health officer, Dr. Ori Sveli. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Roth. I'm going to give you all a brief update today and our own local health orders and an vaccine update. And then I will hand it off to Dr. McCurrya, who will talk about schools and vaccine effectiveness. So as Director Roth mentioned, we expect that the state will lift the indoor masking order on February 15th. And we have our own local order here. We have published three criteria for lifting our own order. Just a reminder, the first one we've already met, which was eight weeks since the COVID vaccine was authorized for the five to 11-year-old age group. So we met that one. The second one was reaching the CDC moderate transmission tier after, and remaining there for three weeks. And we are currently the high transmission tier. And numbers are dropping, but they're still 10 times more than they were before the Omicron wave. And the third criteria was, we said, there'd be fewer than 75 hospitalizations as a sign that the healthcare, something that the healthcare delivery systems can handle. There are currently more than 270. And some of the ICUs are at full capacity. Some systems are deferring elective surgery still. So we're still not there where we want to be for the healthcare systems. So over the next two weeks, we're going to be looking at the numbers closely. We're gonna figure out the best way to align our own masking order with the state when they announce their decision around February 15th. The most important driver for us right now is less the case numbers and more how the healthcare systems are doing. Because we want to make sure that everyone in the community, when they go to a hospital, is able to receive high-quality care that we all expect for ourselves, for our families. We will also be looking at our own county vaccine verification order to figure out the best timing to lift that. Again, our orders are aimed at, at not preventing every case, but preventing the worst outcomes, meaning hospitalizations and deaths, and we'll look closely at those. I want to remind people that separately from those, there are state guidances that govern rules on masking in workplaces and in schools. And Dr. McCurrya will talk about the schools one shortly. Finally, just a quick update. Moderna vaccine was yesterday granted full approval. The fully approved Moderna vaccine, which is same one as we've had, is now called Spike Facts. So you may hear that name in the news. Pfizer was given the, the same approval back in August. So there's now two fully approved vaccines. And we hope that this approval will add a layer of confidence in that vaccine. We also just heard yesterday that Pfizer is about to submit an application for the vaccine formulation for the six-month to four-year-old age group. That's application after it's submitted will probably take at least a month, maybe two, to be approved. If it's approved, the committees have to meet. Oftentimes, the FDA requests more data from the company. So it's a pretty rigorous approval process, particularly for this youngest age group. With that, I will hand it off to Dr. McCurrya for her update.
Thank you, Dr. Sveli. As mentioned, I wanted to review the school masking order. Masks at schools are one of the many layers of protection built into the state's K through 12 guidance that help reduce the risk of outbreaks and slow transmission. It's not just to protect children. Schools are community centers that touch people of all ages and levels of potential risk from COVID-19. People who are vaccinated and boosted, in addition, people who are vaccinated and boosted have a much lower chance of getting infected. More importantly, getting seriously ill from infection, as Dr. Sveli mentioned. The CDC recently found that someone who has, has received a booster dose of COVID-19 vaccine is 68 times less likely to die from COVID than someone who is not fully vaccinated. For many people, Omicron is not like getting a cold. Health orders are safety measures that protect everyone in the community, including people who are not or cannot be vaccinated. Today, there are 274 COVID-19 patients in our county hospitals, and there are 28 deaths of county residents that are reported due to COVID-19 in January. We also do expect to see more deaths reported this next month. I want to turn it back to Dr. Roth.
Thank you. And before I turn it over back to you, Chair Mitchoff, I just wanted to let the board know, and our community know, that we are working on how we share information at these important weekly updates, or these important updates we have with the board. We often present a number of data points. Actually, the data points are pulled from all over our website. And so what we are, and it can be difficult for people to track those. It can, we don't want you to have to sort of be scrolling in real time. So we're actually going to be, going forward, we'll be developing a, a place on our webpage, just a page, that actually will compile the graphics that we actually are referencing during our formal remarks. So we'll actually put, those will be available in real time, live when we give these reports. Again, these will be for the formal remarks, because we know, actually, we cover a lot of ground, even in the question and answers. But we want to be able to provide a reference so that you all can be referencing what we're referencing in real time. So we hope to make that, we hope to open that live support page when we give these, when we give these reports, by the next time we come to the board. With that, Chair Mitchoff, I will hand back to you for questions.
Thank you, Anna. Do any of my colleagues have questions? I see Candace raising her hand. And you're on mute. There you go.
No, and, and thank you, all of you. This is, again, it's, it's amazing. We're here two years later, going into year three. So question I have is, will other Bay Area counties likely continue with some type of masking order? If the state actually just says, we're done February 15th, no further masking order. Ori, I know you're regularly consulting with the rest of Abajo. Is it likely that other counties will also follow suit and possibly continue using the three criterion we're using to make a decision as to when lift masking requirements?
Thank you for that question. Yes, we're in regular conversation with our state partners and our local Bay Area partners. The, the conversation really is about looking at the data very close to the time when the, the February 15th date comes around. Some counties are feeling like they're, and, and we're, we're focusing less on the case counts. It's really all about the healthcare systems. Are they going to be able to tolerate, you know, another bump in cases that is expected to happen when we lift some of these restrictions? And some counties are, are very tenuous on the healthcare system. Some have more confidence. So I expect there to be some diversity. I suspect that most will lift with, you know, within a month of the state, but I'm not sure exactly when. I think it will be very county by county.
Well, and so do you really, and again, just, just, I know you don't know what we're going to be doing on February 15th, but you have emphasized quite a bit healthcare capacity being the number one priority. So as, and we've already reached the vaccination capacity. So is it possible, if we see our hospitalizations decline, we still see transmission significant, just because we know now that boost, boosted people can get it, they just have a much more mild reaction, that we really would be just focusing on that hospitalization number to determine when we lift the masking order as opposed to transmission?
Would it be okay if I jump in here just for a moment, Dr. Sveli? I think these are really all good questions. And I, I'm always, we're always hesitant to look into the crystal ball. But I will say, you know, one of the things that as we assemble the health, our own health officer group, which is, there are several deputy health officers that meet with the policy group, that we are actually, they are looking at every, every single criteria. And there may be, again, different things that we have to consider. So I do, I just wanted to jump in before Dr. Sveli answers the specific question to say, I think that it is fair to say that we will be, with each wave, the, the risks take different shapes, and even in each phase of the wave. And we will look at every risk that we look at and actually be open to considering new and also departing from other things that I think seemed have a lot of weight in the beginning. But actually now, as Dr. Sveli said, the case rates may not, you know, be the emphasis going forward. We maybe, you've been hearing, hearing the word decoupling, and, but other things may come into play, as well as we, we also don't know exactly what the state will be doing. So all of those things are, will be carefully considered. And again, I, I didn't mean to sort of interrupt you, Dr. Sveli, but I just, this is a crystal ball question. And so I wanted to just emphasize that, but though we are, I think if the sig, the signal that we're really sending this week is that rates are going down. We do expect hospital, even though hospitalizations that are at an all-time high, we expect those to go down too. And we will look at every local order to make sure that it's really still aligned with where we are in Contra Costa County. And I expect all the Abajo counties will be doing that.
Okay. And I appreciate it. I, I realize I'm not trying to corner someone into making a speculative decision, but as I communicate with my constituents, I have, for the last, you know, three months, been saying, here are the three criterion. You've got to be, you know, in this lower transmission rate by CDC. You've got to meet this hospitalization of 75 or under, and 80% of the population has to be boosted. So if we're potentially going to be deviating from those three criterion, I don't want to keep espousing that that's what we're looking at. Because I think it's just very, very, you know, people are frustrated. I get so many emails of, when are we shifting to endemic from pandemic mode? How are we going, you know, at some point, we're going to be living with this. So I think that's really, you know, the basis of my question. If we're looking at, maybe it's not going to be just these three criterion anymore. I want to stop communicating that it is those three criterion. So that, that was really the basis. Other questions. So masking orders may be modified coming up. Do you also anticipate us max, again, changing some of our vaccination requirements with regard to going into indoor dining, large gatherings? You know, some of this is governed by our state guidelines with regard to our, our mass gatherings, but particularly, you know, proof of vaccination for restaurants. Do we anticipate that modifying anytime soon as so many more people are vaccinated? Or will we probably continue that for a while?
We're definitely looking at that. Again, keeping a, a close eye on the healthcare system. I really completely want to agree with what Director Roth just said. It's, it's really very much of a local decision. Each county is different. We're exceedingly lucky of how mild, on average, Omicron was. When, I remember hearing about Omicron right before Thanksgiving, you know, and within four weeks, it was the dominant variant. Now it's 99% of, and, and so these things can change very quickly. So we're, we're keeping just a very close eye. And, and I just also want to say endemic, I mean, it's, COVID is here. It's with us. There will likely be future waves. I don't think we're, uh, we talk to our partners, we will, we're likely to see a wave in the unknown still. So we're really keeping it and being cautious. There's still, I mean, our, our, we've had, I think, 10 deaths in the last couple of days. So this is, this is not a cold. This is not a flu. This is a significant pathogenic organism. And, uh, and we're, we're just going to keep a close eye. But yes, we are looking at the vaccine verification change though.
Okay. Yeah. And again, those are the questions I'm receiving in my office. I appreciate all that everyone's doing and the regular updates. And I, I appreciate the ability we've had to help put out test kits. And, you know, we have, keep an interest list in our office of individuals. So we're hoping we'll get some more test kits in the upcoming weeks, just because they are so helpful and for families that either have been exposed, or they're going to be going to see loved ones who are much more vulnerable. So, so thank you for getting those to our offices as well.
Diane?
Yeah, it's interesting. I've spoken to a lot of people that have used the at-home tests that really had no symptoms, but for whatever reason, whether it was a family member had tested positive, or nobody had tested positive, but they needed to go back to school or go. A lot of people have just got tested positive because they had those at-home tests. It is, it's been a very helpful thing. So I, I'm glad that we are giving people those tools. And again, I, I think this is probably the third or fourth week in a row. I'll just keep reminding people that are listening that the positivity rate that we're reporting does not include all the at-home tests. So what two years ago would have been a number is, is a different number now because of the at-home test availability. And I think that's part of the reason why we can't really depend on that number when we're making certain decisions. And I think we're emphasizing how much we're trying to protect our hospitals and our healthcare centers. And so there's, it is important that if you need a test, or if you do test positive, that you don't go to the emergency room, that you call your primary care physician. It's always good to have a pulse oximeter in the house. And so we need to really be all taking a role in protecting our hospitals and our healthcare system. And we are in a transitional time. So there's going to come a time when, well, and we're already there, where there's going to be less and less restraints on folks as far as what they can or can't do. And I just really want to emphasize, and I, and I encourage you all in the health department to start, or to continue, or to more emphasize personal responsibility. If you go into a business, or you go to some sort of gathering, are you taking personal responsibility for your health? And for those that you're spending time with? Because, like I said at the beginning, you may not know that you're positive. And you could have it, and you need to be careful, because we all need to take care of each other. I, I know I just kind of went off, but one of my questions is in the hospitals. I know some other counties, some other hospital systems are not at the capacity to be able to take care of everybody. Are we doing any assistance at this time?
We, we have not, we, we always have a mutual aid available. We have not gotten requests at this time to bring, you know, to transfer out. And when we, when we do get those requests, we're, we are always working on them. So that's something that's going on all the time. We don't have sort of different counties yet, or any particular hospital, other than one-offs, which, which kind of happen all the time, requesting to send patients in. But that system is always up and running, that mutual aid system. And so we, we can be doing that at any given time.
Okay. So again, I just want to really remind people that most of the time, we aren't expecting to go to the hospital. Most of the time, we don't know that we're going to have an accident or an injury. And every time we do something, taking our own personal responsibility of making sure we're being safe, we're protecting everyone, and we're protecting a hospital system that's going to take care of our friends, our loved ones, ourselves, because we are not over, over using them and making it so hard that ambulances have to sit a long time, that you have to wait a long time to be seen, or that elective surgeries need to be canceled. So personal responsibility.
Supervisor Joya.
Thanks. I did want to just continue to thank the efforts of Health Services, and both in terms of also continuing to provide at-home vaccinations to those that are homebound. I, I want to try to publicize that. We have gotten some requests. And I know Health Services followed up that people who are older and vulnerable and, and, and cannot, and are homebound, can get vaccinated at home. So I just want to publicize that. And I, and especially, I know this has come up with regard to the boosters, because we are doing so well in Contra Costa with regard to full vaccinations. I mean, we're about 80% of the eligible population has two doses. But a li- little under 50% are boosted. And that's really where the effort needs to continue. And other healthcare partners are doing the same. Kaiser, for example. So I, I think that it remains the message and the effort is getting, getting more individuals boosted. And for those that say, oh, these are emergency authorization. Well, Moderna and Pfizer have received full, let me repeat that, full FDA approval. So this, these arguments that people make that it's emergency use is untrue and inaccurate. So, Dr. Sveli, can you just talk about the sort of best practices on using the in-home test? I think there's a lot of questions about that. I know we are, we continue to get supplies out to communities, although now they are available online, right? From the federal government, or you can buy them from a third party as well, and get reimbursed by your healthcare. So can you sort of talk about that?
Thank you, Supervisor Joya, and thank you for emphasizing boosters. I, I really do think that's our biggest opportunity to prevent disease and death. As far as the at-home tests, there, there's really two main uses for them. The first is to find out if you have COVID. So if you're symptomatic and you think, gosh, I think I might have COVID, or then you do them. And it's, they're, they're really quite accurate in telling you whether you're able to transmit COVID to others. Sometimes at the beginning of your illness, as your body, you might have symptoms, but you haven't quite built the viral load to be transmissible, they will stay negative. So if you have symptoms, stay home, even if that, you know, at-home test is negative. You don't want to transmit it to others. And you can sometimes test again the next day or the day after that. And eventually, that test will, will turn positive. That just happened with my wife. My wife has COVID right now. She started getting symptoms. She didn't have a positive at-home test. The first day, we took another one the next day, and it did turn positive. So that's the, one of the uses. The second use is when, to find out if you have COVID, to find out if you're able to re-enter society and your isolation earlier than the 10 days, you know, so you can start testing on day five. And as soon as your test, your at-home test is negative, you can end your isolation at day five, but still wear a mask for the days five through 10. but still wear a mask for the days five through ten. And then similar to that is if you're in quarantine, meaning you're close contact to someone with COVID. You can test generally at day five also to see if you can end your quarantine. Otherwise you keep it for ten days. So those are really the three main uses.
Thanks. I have one other question. So I've been asked this question. So if we can get this information. So tomorrow, tomorrow night's West Contra Costa Unified School District Board Meeting, there's an agenda item to push back the vaccination, the full vaccination requirement for students from February twenty, from later in February to the fall to August. And so the question that was raised is, is there any county data that shows what percent of students between twelve and seventeen or twelve and eighteen are actually vaccinated? Because I think that is an issue that they, I think some board members want to understand on this decision that there's, was some belief that a majority of students are vaccinated. But how, how, how would we get that data? And the reason I mentioned, it's a relevant decision to a school board tomorrow night about whether to delay, you know, by six months, the vaccination, vaccination. And, and what is your general belief on, on those kinds of things? Or do you have one or guidance?
Well, I think that in general, the, the sooner more people are vaccinated and more people are boosted, the less transmission there will be, the less hospitalization, the less that there will be. And it is true that the younger people generally have milder symptoms and milder disease. But one thing we've learned during the course of the pandemic is we're all interconnected, right? Those kids have parents at home, they have grandparents. Their parents, them themselves, they interact with other people who go home to elders or more vulnerable people. So we are truly one interconnected community. And so the more people are boosted and vaccinated, the better we do. And that's just beyond any doubt at this point. So I think sooner is better. The answer to your specific question is yes, we do have a vaccination dashboard. If you go to coronavirus.cclhealth.org and you, at the top, you'll see a vaccine tab and you pull down, you go to the vaccine dashboard. Over there you can see it broken down by age groups. So
But it's county wide.
County wide, that's right. We don't have it by school district or by region of the county.
So the percent of people vaccinated by age group and, and vaccinated again, you have blue is vaccinated plus the booster, right? Vaccinated, the dark green. So for example, it looks like wow, it for, 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 it is actually pretty high. Am I missing something? Twelve to fifteen and sixteen to nineteen.
It's unbelievably great. It's, it's really like our community has responded.
It's like ninety percent.
That's right. That's right. Our, the vast majority of our communities really listened to the science and, and gone on to get the vaccine, which has been wonderful. The boosters, we have a, we have a ways to go. You can see the blue tab is a lot smaller than we want it to be.
Right. So in looking at this, so I'm just trying to extrapolate because this, I will try to answer if, 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 if indeed, and it looks like countywide, we're doing pretty well. Like for example, if you look at just the general numbers, Richmond, for example, is pretty much at the at the, at, at, you know, is at eighty percent. And that's the countywide average, correct?
Correct.
Of, of fully vaccinated. So it, one would assume from the data that it's, you know, that this number is pretty constant around the county. Got it. Okay. Now, can you pull out data by, by geographic areas if there was a request to do so?
We can ask that.
Yeah, we can ask our data team.
Okay, we'll talk about that after. If you, if I can ask for that. Okay?
We're not sure we can, but we will ask the data team that.
Thanks. Okay. All right. Okay.